Call this meeting to order, the Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge. Our meeting of Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Bernie?
Here.
Franklin?
Here.
Blackwood?
Here.
Hollenbeck?
Here.
Cricklow?
Here.
McNally?
Here. If we can stand a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lucy, what's the status of the posting of this meeting?
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundsen Community Center, Cambridge State Bank, Cambridge Post Office, and the Village website.
Okay. Paula, you wanted to make a motion to change the agenda where for?
Do you want me to do it before or after public comment?
How many people are going to want to speak, public comment?
Anyone?
I just have someone to speak when it comes to fire commission.
Okay. Now we can hold on. Hope nobody wants to speak.
All right, I'll make a motion to move the 8A under new business Spring Water Alley bids up to current. That will allow us to get MSA out of here quicker so we don't have to pay him to sit through the whole meeting.
I'll second.
We got a motion, Chuck?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we're going to move on to Spring Water Alley bids and 8A burying of the power lines. Looks like there's work being done down by private company.
That's landscaping.
Yeah, I see that. Okay, go ahead here.
Okay, well, I wanted to provide an update. So we had the bid opening on March 28th. We had four bidders. The four bidders were Wolf Paving, Payne and Dolan, Forest Landscaping, and RT Vogel Excavating. The lowest bid, we call it the lowest responsible bid, meaning we verified the bid, was Wolf Paving. So in this case, we had the base bid, which was the street itself, along with storm sewer component. Then we also had an alternate. Alternate one was the diagonal parking. That would be the parking outside for the police department. And then we had an alternate bid two, which is the parking on the lower end of the Spring Water Alley. So we put those alternates in there to be able to give more flexibility to the village if budget was an issue. So as far as Wolf Paving, their bid came in at $136,631.64. Their bid alternate for diagonal parking was $10,480. And bid alternate two for the adjacent parking lot was $17,525. So typically what we would do is include a letter of recommendation for the bid award. In this case, because there was alternates, we provided a bid award simply stating that Wolf Paving would be the recommended contractor for the base and any combination of the alternates. And then based on the determination from the village tonight, we would then draft the bid award with whatever selection the village decides to move forward with. So essentially, if the village decides to move forward with the project, if they simply allowed or if they simply awarded the base bid, it'd be a total of $136,631.64. Adding the alternate one would add $10,480 and adding alternate two, an additional $17,525. Of that, of the total of $164,636.64, water and sewer portion would be $31,650. So the village portion would be $132,986.64. And that is fully in the base bid itself. There would be no water and sewer portion in either one of the alternates.
Any concerns about Wolf over the other contractors? They're all reputable.
No, all four contractors were reputable. After the bid, I contacted Wolf, went through the bid with them. Everything was included. Fairly straightforward project for them. So no concerns with awarding the project to Wolf.
Is there a retention on this one, too?
Sure. Yep, there is a percentage retention that we would hand. But in this case, depending on how long the project lasted, there's very little restoration or anything on this one, which is typically what you're holding out longer after the project is complete. But I would anticipate a project like this with pulverizing and the storm sewer, maybe depending on when you start your talking, maybe two billing cycles, that would be about it. So over probably two months, I would say.
Cody?
Yes.
Do you have, from a public works perspective, do you have any concerns about working with Wolf? No? Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, anybody want to make a motion here?
What did we have in road aid?
I was going to say, I have some questions once we, if we're going to do a bid or some comments once we, but I didn't know if you wanted me to wait for a motion first.
You have to have a motion to get into that, so.
Yeah.
I would just, I would also just add then, the, from the base bid, which is just Spring Water Alley, the village portion would be $104,981. The water and sewer portion would be $31,650.
You said 104?
104, just under 105,000. I grant that these are unit prices, so typically when we do our estimates, we include a contingency in there, too, in case there's any undercutting or anything like that. So, but these are, those numbers are going to be based on the bid prices. If any quantities change, obviously the portions would change slightly.
Okay, well, do we have a motion at least to move it along for discussion?
Make a motion to, how do I word this? Consider the Wolf paving bid for Spring Water Alley?
Oh. Consider it or approve it?
We'll go with approval.
We're selecting them, yeah.
Okay, I will amend that.
I got a motion, we have a second?
Well, second.
Okay, now we can have discussion.
So my question was, because last time we looked at this with the estimates, we thought, was if we did this this year, all of our road aid would be used up for this. And is that, and I had asked if Public Works could take a look at what other things won't we be able to do because we're doing this? So I don't know if you guys were able to do that or not.
Thought we had like $160,000?
I thought it was in the teens.
I thought it was around 120, but I don't have.
120?
Because I, for some reason, 116 is in my head, so yeah, 120 is probably pretty close to what it was.
And then these add-ons, can you explain the diagonal parking?
That's diagonal parking that's out here, right.
And then the other one is the?
The lower parking lot.
It's behind the tap house.
Correct.
The parking lot behind the tap house.
Okay, I remember that.
I personally think we don't do the two add-ons.
No, we're not in a position to do it. So if we do use our 105 of road aid for the base bid, and then we still have 15 for other things.
Patching.
Patching, exactly, yeah.
When this parking lot was done last, did the library pay for part of it? Parking lot out here?
I have no, I don't even know when the last time that was done.
Because when this parking lot was done up here, they did this police area as well.
Was that done at the same time they were building the library?
No, they've done it since then.
Since then?
Yeah.
Been when I wasn't on the board?
But that's why I would be, you know, whenever this parking lot needs to get done again, we can probably do this up here.
Right.
And the tap house parking lot thing, I don't know. I don't know what that's going to eventually be. I know it's our property, but there's interest there, so.
So Chuck, you were in support of this, but without the alternatives, correct?
Yeah, just the base, base bid. What's going on with the power lines? See that, bearing the power lines?
So Lisa put that in there. I wasn't aware of anything associated with, there was nothing associated with this project that we were doing as far as any type of additional utility work, so.
So at the water and sewer meeting, we had asked the village staff to reach out to the building owners whose lines weren't buried for across the street to let them know that if we go forward with it, to let them know the road will be dug up. So if they're interested in burying their line, that would be the opportunity for them to do it at their cost.
Okay.
That's what that was from water and sewer.
And we were not going to reach out into those people until we know for sure that this was a goal.
Right.
Okay, that's a great idea.
So do you guys think this is something we do this year? Do we put it off to next year?
No.
No. The street needs it.
I'm going to see if we do it this year.
I'm kind of concerned where the stormwater is going.
That's the biggest thing.
If we didn't have the stormwater issue underneath the street, I'm not sure I would be hot to do it this year. But because we've got that stormwater issue underneath, and we have no idea where that water really is ending up, and if it may end up causing us bigger problems if we ignore it for another year, that's the only reason I'm kind of on board with this.
I agree.
That's why I guess I'm concerned from an engineering standpoint, once you start, you know, undoing the onion and they find more issues with it, what's the contingencies?
For the storm sewer?
Right.
Well, one thing that we had done, we had worked with public work staff to jet the line.
Okay.
So the entire main line was jetted and cleaned. The only portion where there was significant damage to the storm sewer was the outfall from the inlet extending to the southeast or the southwest. So this plan essentially eliminates that section altogether and connects it in on the west end. So as far as that goes, we feel confident as far as simply adding that storm sewer down there that.
We're not going to get some extorbit change order or anything like that from the?
We certainly would not anticipate, no. That's one of the reasons that we included in there and we did the investigation that we did to understand the issues.
All right, thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second, but we also talked about no alternatives on this. Can you read back the motion, please, Lucy?
Yes, I wanted to clarify, Kristen, was that to consider or to approve?
To approve.
That is to approve. Okay, so the motion was to approve Wolf Paving to complete the base project, which would be $136,631.64, and not alternative one or two.
Correct.
Your recollection of that motion? Any further discussion before I ask the matter? Okay, roll call, please.
Yes, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Something to say. I believe Paula had asked Public Works to come up with alternative projects if we were to not do Spring Water Alley. We did come up with those, if you would like to hear them.
Okay, so these are road projects that we won't be doing because we're doing Spring Water Alley? We don't have to?
It is a list of roads that Jay and I identified.
Okay.
That could use some work or they degrade more. Most of them are in pretty good condition, and that is exactly why we would want to do work on them, is to keep them in good condition. And some of these roads are Ridge, Dolan, and Central Court could be seal coated and crack filled. Pinecrest could be patched, crack filled and seal coated. England Street patched, crack filled and seal coated. Whiskey Thief Way could be crack filled and seal coated. Seal coated. North Street, crack filled, seal coat. Mill Street, High Street, South Street, and Lawn Street are some of the ones that we identified as a higher priority.
It's a live speech.
Now, I don't necessarily think the approximately 120,000 would cover all of that, but those are some projects that could be done instead of Spring Water Alley. How many of them? I can't say. I have no prices on it or anything, but it's just what Jay and I identified when we drove downtown.
So is your, so those could be done to keep them in the good condition they are now? What would be the impact of waiting another year to do those?
Some of the cracks might get a little bigger. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be terrible to let them go another year.
Okay.
But we were asked to come up with a list.
Yes.
So we drove around and came up with a list for you.
And that's a good list. Can you make sure that list goes to the Public Works Committee?
Yes.
So that they understand, particularly when we start budgeting for next year, which we're going to start a whole lot earlier this year than we did last year, that we can make sure that we're taking those roads into consideration when we're doing that. That'd be great. Thank you so much, Cody.
No problem.
All right, thanks, Cody. We're back to roll call.
Roll call, okay. Franklin?
Yes.
Bernie?
Yes.
Hollenbeck?
Yes.
Cricklow?
Yes.
Blackwood?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. All right, it's approved. And good luck with this one here. All righty.
Just a follow-up. What I'll end up doing is writing a recommendation with just alternate one rejected, or with base bid rejecting alternates one and two, and then I'll get that, you want me to send it to you, Mark, because I know Lisa's out until next week.
You can actually send it to me.
Okay, I'll send it to you, and that'll be the notice of award, and then we'll proceed with contracts for that.
And then there is a concern for the library on when that road is done. One of the biggest fundraisers for the library is book sale, or for the Friends of the Library, I should say, and it's the Friends of the Library that have the concern, and the library. So, and that is the first Saturday of August. So if we could have it either done before that time or started after that time so that we don't have to carry, you know, 1,000 boxes of books from up there to down here, would be great.
What we'll do is we'll get the contracts taken care of, and then as soon as they're taken care of, what we'll do is find out when Wolf would be putting it on their schedule, and we'll bring that conflict up, too.
Okay, super.
I would anticipate that we try to get this done in advance of that, so it's done ahead of time, but it's going to be based on Wolf's schedule.
Sure, super, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Do you have my email address, though?
Let's move on. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Which are the village board meeting minutes from the March 25th meeting. March, is that it? Yep.
I'll second.
All right.
Hang on, guys, hang on. It's just like Lisa's, just help here.
I'll send it over tomorrow.
Thank you so much. Okay.
All right, we've got an approval or a motion in a second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I did.
Paula, and who seconded it?
I did.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then do I do a roll call for this one?
No.
Nope, just?
Let me ask if there's any questions.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Any issues concerning questions?
Didn't see anything.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Reports. I've just, this will be my last meeting. We had elections last week. The democratic process played out.
I'm actually going to hijack your president's report, Mark. On behalf of the board, I wanted to give you this gift for your service.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mark.
I appreciate that.
Well, you haven't read it yet, so.
Oh, well, I. Should I?
But I figure you're a historian, so you might appreciate this.
Yeah, okay. The man in the arena. Theodore Roosevelt. I'm going to read this. "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how strong the man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming. But who does actually strive to do the deeds? Who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." This was from Theodore Roosevelt and presented to me here. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
I appreciate it. I do want to say thank you to some people here. Cody, thank you for being here, and Jay, and Derek, and Lee. You guys are a wonderful, wonderful, just a group of talent, and for keeping our community looking great. Thank you for what you're doing. I want to thank the office staff. You know, Lucy, you're new, but please pass on regards. You have joined some great people, Vicky, Judy, Lisa. We appreciate so much what you all do upstairs. And I know it's not easy. I know that the phone calls come through and what is going on with these bills, and I kid some of you because one of you has to make the payments and the other one has to collect the money, and, you know, collecting the money is sometimes a little tough. But thank you for what you're doing.
Of course.
I also want to thank this board. I haven't always agreed with you, you know that, but I will say this, I have no doubt of your dedication for what is best for Cambridge. And you really do rise to the challenge. You do the work, I see this. And it's not just the night of, it's on the weekend, and it's during the week. And, you know, even something as small as the Welcome to Cambridge, someday we're going to get those signs up. You know, I saw that with you, Chuck, and I saw that with you, Kristen, to go out there on a day, during the day, to look at this. And I could start, but I'm going to stop with that because there are just so many. Paula, Brian, Chris, what you do here, and I wish you all the best of luck in the months ahead, and there are some challenges. Chris, good job, good campaign. I wish you continued success here, working with this board and serving this community. We are so special, the community, to live in this kind of an environment. And people do care. I don't know what the numbers were for the election, but it probably was 800 people voted. Do you remember?
I have it, it's going to be in my report.
Okay. It's, people civic responsibly are minded here. And so thank you, Cambridge. Thank you for all the committees. I don't want to start going through and singling out because we'll be here all evening, but it has been a pleasure. It has been an honor to serve you, and I wish you nothing but success in the months and the years ahead. So that's my report, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, I'm going to move on. Public Works update. Who's got this one here?
Cody's going to do, and Cody, if you want, you can sit at this table so you have the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. I am the current.
Cody, you're going to have to talk a little louder so that the people in the back of the room can hear you.
Got it.
And me.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Cody Garcia, current interim Public Works Director. Since the last Public Works meeting, we have painted the Amundsen Center Community Room.
Looks great.
Thank you. Tree Works removed a silver maple tree on Johnson Street. Alliant Energy removed 11 pine trees at Well 3 that were weaved into the power lines. And Public Works removed a dead birch tree on High Street. And we also removed a dangerous hanging limb on South, excuse me, South Pleasant Street. We've been continuing to trim terraced trees. We just started brush and compost pickup today, which will continue every second Tuesday of every month. And Derek and myself went to the Wisconsin Rural Water Association Annual Conference in Green Bay for our continuing education for the water department and all the certifications we hold. The Clay Collective banner was put up on Monday. Lee has been out making rounds around the village with the street sweeper. Jay and I cleared a sewage backup on Saturday afternoon. And once again, also a big thank you to the Monday Morning Sewing Group for fixing our flag again. It had to be taken down, the end came unraveled, but they fixed it again. So thank you very much to them. I do have an update on the welcome signs when we get to that, it's on the agenda, I believe. And then just as a heads up, about two and a half hours ago, there was a, potentially a power line, maybe a communication line, that got knocked to the ground on North High Street. And I put up road closed signs, so Alliant Energy has been contacted and they should be here tonight to take care of it. But as of right now, a small portion of North High Street is closed.
Cody, is that called?
I don't know. I don't know. I am not qualified to make that sort of call. I call Alliant Energy.
Okay.
I got there and... Yes, we tried to get ahold of people as soon as we could. Yeah. Thank you. I will call 911. Tasks to be completed, we're going to continue working on the welcome sign. We're going to continue street sweeping. We still have to get started on evaluating sidewalks and trip hazards and compile a priority list. I am going to speak with MSA again because I learned a few things at our Wisconsin Rural Water Conference. I spoke with the employees from the city of Wausau, and they had some really good tips about how to collect the information. So I'm going to speak with MSA and have them try to implement that into our GIS system. We are going to continue controlled burns of village sites. Consult with Lee Recreation on LBK Park and layout to determine site preparation. We are also going to replace the West Side Park mulch, continue trimming terraced trees, begin patching potholes. And Tree Works was just contacted today to remove another dangerous hanging limb on High Street, and the sidewalk has been closed in that area until they can get there. They should be here soon, they said. And that's all I have. Any questions for me?
Okay. Cody? Cody, I'll just, it's in our minutes from last meeting, but I had stopped in to see that we have a quilting club here in town, and they are very impressed with you. When you came in, you explained it, and taking advantage of their technical skills. And they were very pleased to work on this, and every one of them, they just really liked the professionalism you had displayed, so great job.
Awesome, thank you. And I can't thank them enough, either. That was very helpful.
So it's a great way of solving a problem. I wouldn't have thought about filters, fix the flag, but that flag is expensive, and if we can get another year out of it with their efforts, that's wonderful. Does that thing, what, does that run like 15 grand, that flag?
One of those flags is about $600 or $700.
Okay.
Cody, I have a quick question.
Yes.
I got a message just shortly before our meeting started.
I got a message just shortly before our meeting started. Did we do brush and compost pickup today?
Yes, we did. We were able to get through brush. Tomorrow, we're going to roll into compost.
That's exactly. I had a message, and their compost wasn't picked up. So, I'll just let them know it'll continue tomorrow.
Yes, yeah. Brush took all day today.
And it's two different vehicles that you use, which is why you do the two separately?
Yes. We do them separately, because we can't put compost through the wood chipper.
Correct. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cody.
Lucy, we're up to you here with Village Office Updates.
All right. So, we had a good turnout for the election last week with 948 total voters, which was approximately 71% turnout.
Wow.
Letters have gone out regarding election results. New terms take effect on April 15. The two write-ins were Sharon Jacobson and Jennifer Trundle. They both accepted the trustee position and have taken their oath already. Chris Brunin will resign his seat. That vacancy will be on April 22, 2025 agenda. I do believe you have to provide a resignation letter.
Yep.
All paperwork and electronic files have been delivered to the school and both counties. We are prepping for notices mailed and published for public hearing for the plan commission. Number of ongoing projects for that meeting. I spoke with Surgenian's Carpet Company today. Carpet will arrive by the end of the month. And installation should take place the first or second week of May.
Any other questions here for Village Office Updates?
Who were the write-ins that accepted?
Sharon Jacobson and Jennifer Trundle.
Sharon Jacobson used to be a librarian, so you may know her from the library. And Jennifer Trundle is the current library board president. So... That's awesome. Really excited about both of them. That's great news.
Sweet. Okay. All right. Anything for Lucy on Office Updates before we turn on to Treasurer's Report? Okay. You want to go through the bills first here?
Absolutely. First bill run in the amount of $20,456.87. Second run in the amount of $219,165.50, for a total of $239,622.37.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills and set them out.
All right. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right.
Can you go over the...
Discussion.
Can you go over the bills over $5,000, please?
Absolutely. So, there are three bills over $5,000. The first one is Dean Health Plan for $6,279.52. And that is the health insurance for the employees that take that. The next one is Tree Works. Cody, listen up, because I'm not sure if you saw this one yet. But Tree Works for $9,775. We just got that, and that's part of tonight's bill run. I know I got you the budget for the trees. And then, the last one is Cambridge Development LLC for $207,844.74. And in the very last page of your packet, I included the spreadsheet for the vineyards. It was our schedule of payments, and that is the final payment to the vineyards.
Great. So, then, so that will be, in addition to next year's revenue for the village, will be, instead of us paying the taxes that we're getting from the vineyard properties, back to pay off that developer's agreement that's now done. So, that will come back to the village to be able to use in other ways.
Nice.
How much is that?
It's like 207...
207...
Yeah.
844.
About time.
Well, yeah.
Some good news.
So, that makes up for like the $200,000 loan that we took out for this year that we had to do. But which is great from that perspective, but we are nowhere close to being able to pay for EMS services.
No, no, no.
Which is a whole different ballgame. So... But it does help.
Finally. Okay.
Okay. So, we've got a motion and a second. Any other questions? All right. Roll call, please.
Brunin.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Preklow.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right. Bills are paid on the amount of 207... 207... Well...
239,622. Okay. And so, for the Treasurer's Report, last week I assisted with election preparation and Election Day. I was able to download an update onto Badger Books that allowed us to scan driver's licenses, which was very helpful, especially for same-day registrations. Made it a lot quicker. All bank accounts have been reconciled for the month of March. I have submitted requested reports to Ellers for the water sewer and storm accounts. They had another, two other additional requests where I had Vicky reach out to the water sewer storm committee and Derek Schrodle for some assistance, as I'm not aware of future projects. These requests were any planned capital improvement expenditures for 2025 and beyond, and any planned operating expenditures for 2025 and beyond that we should be aware of. Examples, new hires, planned maintenance, expected increases in treatment charges from Cambridge, Oakland, et cetera. So, I wanted everybody to have time, so that it's not at the meeting where we're trying to think of the things I'm sure the Water Sewer Storm Committee has been working on for years. And I, we had that meeting with Baumann Associates on March 28, which I informed you all at our last meeting. And that went well. So, I was not given an exact amount, but was told about approximately $1,000 to $1,500 of out-of-scope work had been completed. I asked for an itemized list of all the work that's been completed with all of the fees. And I did make sure to inform them that our last invoice from 2024, we were not given detailed information, and that we absolutely had to have that. Next Monday, April 14, will be our final workday. So, they have not been working on the audit since, because they have other, you know, we had our week. But next Monday will be the final workday, and everything should be wrapped up after that. And just a reminder to Paula, and I can find out a time, but they were going to call you to do the board member phone call.
Okay. Which day?
Monday. And I'll get a time.
And can you...
We can touch base after the meeting.
Yeah. Just, if I could get like even the area code they're calling from, because I don't answer phone calls that I don't recognize on my phone.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, and that's just one part of the audit, that they want to speak with a board member.
Okay. So, what you're saying is that they've gone over by about $1,500 for this year's audit?
Yes.
But they're also on notice that we're watching.
They are on notice.
Okay.
Absolutely. And that, I do expect Monday's hours to be additional to that. But we told them that before they do anything excessive, they have to get our approval, so that we're in the loop, and it's not a big surprise. And that was everything for the Treasurer's Report.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay. We're going to jump into new business. Now, we've already covered the spring water alley bids. Move on to the street use permit, the Cambridge Area Lions Club. Lucy, you've got this. I see we've got a couple days that they're asking.
I'll make a motion to approve the street use permit for the Cambridge Area Lions Club Memorial Day Celebration, May 25 through May 27.
A second.
And this is for Veterans Park.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right.
Well, that one was for the street use permit, which is for the stage, similar to what we do for... And so, the second one is the park.
Yes.
You want to make a motion to that?
Anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve the park reservation request with the Lions Club on May 26, 2025.
A second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, we're going to go on to Item 9A, unfinished business and fire an EMS commission update. Start with you, Chris. What do you have?
Well, I forwarded on to Lisa. I had requested a special meeting after our last board meeting. And it was, I didn't get a second person from the commission, so it basically fell on deaf ears. And I got a response back from Mr. Schrader saying that we don't need to have a meeting, because they have contingencies in place for a medical director. I had not seen any contract. Still haven't seen any contract. But I do have a verbal that there is one in place with Mercy. So, I wish I could tell you some more, but we haven't had any meeting, not for lack of trying. But... And I really can't tell you definitely if we have a medical director in place right now. I know Chief Evans had something that he wanted to add to this particular agenda item.
So, just to let the Cambridge Board know that the roof is completed at the fire station. They came in on, they delivered the material on Wednesday. They started Thursday, and they completed on Saturday.
Nice.
Yeah.
Awesome. Great.
Excellent.
And thanks to the foundation for that.
Yes.
Yes.
Let's back up to the medical director. It seems to me we're kind of hoping that they have taken care of this. They've engaged Mercy, and that we're not running bare. In other words, we have oversight, which, from what I recall, we're required to have.
That's what the email that was sent to all of us said. So, and...
I requested a special meeting, so we could talk about it in the commission forum. And it was, I was denied that special meeting. I was instead given an email back saying, "All this is in order." I believe Mr. Han was, the commission lawyer was in that, on that email. I would think, as a commission lawyer, if there was red flags that we didn't have, we didn't have the capability of running an EMS service, he would have said something. But again, it's hard to do a meeting via email. And I think it's illegal, right? Basically? So... But to try to get people to talk and try to get people in a room, it's been tough. So, I can't say without a doubt that we do. We do have an EMS member in the audience. Maybe he can speak to it.
I can tell you that Cambridge EMS had a meeting tonight with Mercy officials, and they are covering us as a medical direction as of the 5th.
Okay. All right.
Affiliation of the members is still in the process, but they are covering our medical direction.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. It sounds like it'd be more definitive, but they have a meeting, I guess. We'll have to make that assumption. All right. What about, what do we want to do here on this Item 1, the second quarter invoice?
So, here's, speaking from the finance committee perspective, what we have budgeted for the fire and EMS commission, we've pretty much already sent to them and spent. So, any additional dollars that we need to spend on EMS is going to need to be borrowed.
The one thing I noticed, and I, correct me if I'm wrong. So, for first quarter, we ended up making three payments. And I believe, if I remember correctly, it totaled to just over $119,000. Now that the budget was approved, our responsibility is the $147,888. So, we're also on the hook for whatever that difference is for first quarter yet.
Yep.
Which we have not received in a fourth invoice for the first quarter.
My, my, I don't know if they're, do you think they're going to send? Well, I don't know. Are they going to send us another invoice? Or since they sent us the overview, are they just going to assume that we make, do the math and understand we owe more?
Or is that incorporated as part of the 147?
What was our...
So, you still owe $28,464 for the first quarter?
Thank you. $28,464? Thank you.
So, here's where I'm sort of at. According to the IGA, we have 60 days to pay the invoice.
From the time of assessment.
From the time of assessment. And it's first quarter, or this assessment was for one. So, we have May, June. We have until June 1 to pay it. So, I say we don't pay it early, because we certainly aren't getting the services we're paying for. And I had a very angry constituent today ask me about getting, why we are not getting the services from our EMS commission that we are paying for.
God, this problem's going to continue on and on. So, we're $28,464 shy of what we should have paid them for the first quarter?
We haven't been assessed for that additional $28,000. And the IGA says that the payments should be made within 60 days of assessment. So, as far as any communication that we've got, we don't yet, we have not yet been assessed that additional $28,000. God, it seems to me that it's correct.
That makes sense to me, too. Yep.
Until the video's viewed.
Unless, unless the, unless the fire commission is considering the letter they sent us that shows us all four quarters? Because the words they use there is that the Village of Cambridge is being assessed for these amounts.
Yeah. Although it wouldn't really...
Although it does say this amount for the second quarter payment.
Right. Because it wouldn't be consistent with this idea that we pay on a quarterly basis for us to get a single invoice with all of the, with all of the assessments all at once. I think, I think the assessment has to be for a particular quarter.
Yep. And that's what this, when I read the whole sentence, it does say for the second quarter, for this one that we received today. Or that's in the pack, in today's package. Yep.
It was pointed out in your request, Chris, that when you asked for the special meeting, that the budget has been passed by three municipalities. So, we're all set, as it says in there. So, we don't have a whole lot of say in it. We just get a bill, correct? And live with the service that we're getting. That doesn't sound so good.
No. Do we have any recourse on this, Jay? Besides a strongly rooted letter? I mean, we're not getting what we're paying for, and we are paying out of the nose for this service now.
It is what we are in arbitration over, is, you know, what should... Which we can talk about more during the close session. But it is, the documentation to support the assessments is certainly a big part of that.
See, the adults need to start getting together and talking.
So, we need to, we need to, I think... I think we, as a board, need to understand that we don't have the money in the budget, whatever this amount ends up finally being. So... So we're going to have to go for a referendum.
In the fall.
And we're, in the fall, and we're going to have to borrow money to pay these bills for the remainder of this year. So as a board, we're going to have to figure out what those two amounts are. And then, I don't know, Lucy, if you're able to, or I don't know when Lisa is back.
She's back on Monday.
Oh, she's back on Monday. So at the next meeting, can we have information on what we need to do to get a referendum on the fall ballot?
Yep.
Because that we absolutely will have to do, so we might as well get started on that now.
What would happen if we just didn't pay it? Not getting the services.
Eventually, we'd be assessed some sort of fee.
Eighteen percent.
Other things, but eventually you litigate and arbitrate that out, I'm assuming. As a lawyer, you would recommend.
Or you go to arbitration, which we are, you know, which we are currently in. But that's, that's the remedy in the IGA when there's a dispute about the budget.
And we're currently in, oh, sorry, go ahead, Chuck.
Fifty percent of the coverage, Oakland's gone. Prices should have came way down. It didn't. Not getting the services.
But Chuck, how could the prices go down? Because we only had one ambulance. It's just, it was covering twice the territory. Now our one ambulance, which is the same amount of people on the same crew, are covering half the amount of territory. But it's still the same amount of people if we're covering 24/7.
But we're not getting paramedic level service.
That's what my complaint is. We are not getting paramedic level service and yet we are paying for it.
And they didn't include the run rub in their entire budget.
They can go ahead and they've got a line of credit.
That line of credit isn't exponential though.
Yeah, I know.
And that has to get paid back at some point, somewhere in the budget.
I am in favor of paying them the $28,000 for at least the first quarter.
But they haven't billed it for it, Mark.
I know that, but the only bill we have is that one, right?
They haven't, we, we can't, we can't, we are not going to pay for something that we haven't been billed for. I mean, who would do that?
In every other circumstance, they have sent us an additional invoice.
Correct, correct.
When will new, because we have new board members in Christiana, we have new board members in Lake Mills.
I believe there's election of officers in first week of May for the commission.
So there shouldn't be any reason why there isn't a commission meeting occurring with the current commissioners, correct? That's a lot of Cs.
Is there a scheduled meeting?
No, that's what I'm...
Right, there, yeah. That's never going to happen.
The current, the current, so each municipality, as of April 15, the new, the new people who were elected are effective.
Right.
So unless there's a meeting of the EMS commission before April 15, then the next meeting will be all the new representatives from the new elected people.
But do we have to wait for May to do that?
No, they don't have to. I think once, but I don't know when each, so like our organizational, we talked about it earlier, where we set who's on which committees, is at our next board meeting.
Right.
So we really wouldn't be able to do it before that board meeting.
So it's May. That's when they have their organizational...
There's also a meeting, an arbitration meeting on April 21st.
Did you just say the unarbitration meeting?
Unarbitration.
Unarbitration.
What? Okay. So that's a chance to at least communicate among the attorneys on the budget issue.
But isn't that the budget issue of 2024?
Well, I mean, yes, except that our position has been that the same documentation that will inform that can help inform the budgets going forward and, you know, that arbitration is probably the remedy for, for any concerns that we continue to have.
Why does it move so slow?
There's a hearing. Is there an expected decision or just a hearing to review again?
Oh, we're, I mean, these are ongoing discussions with the arbitrator.
We can talk for a close session.
Part of the process, but it's not final process.
Is it binding arbitration or is it?
We haven't decided yet whether we need to have it be a binding. Maybe we're headed in that direction, but we're trying to do a mediation if it, if it can work, where the parties can kind of take it or leave it. But if we can't reach a conclusion, an acceptable outcome, then, then it'll be arbitration. The IGA contemplates arbitration.
Right.
It's just a matter of can, can we do it in a less adversarial way?
Right, okay.
I worked in a law office and I didn't understand, we always set arbitrations. Arbitration is this day, you all show up, you present your thing to the arbitrators. The arbitrators go a week or two later, they make a decision. What's this? We're arbitrating the arbitration and then we're having another arbitration meeting to arbitrate? This is just like BS talk. I just never, I've worked in law for 25 years and I've never heard this. Oh, we're having an arbitration meeting to talk about the arbitration, so maybe we'll arbitrate it. What the heck? It's like a waste of money.
The arbitrator is leading the discussions. These are, this is an arbitration that is a result of the town of Oakland's lawsuit and...
And we're just a named party. I mean, Oakland, Oakland has named us the same way they named the other four municipalities, right?
But all of the parties have been coming to the table, meeting, meeting with the arbitrator. And we'll talk more about that in the closed session.
Closed session.
Yeah.
Alright, getting back, what do we want to do here with our second quarter invoice?
I'm not prepared. We, Mark, I will tell you right now, we don't have the money to pay it. So if this board wants to approve paying it, I don't know where you're going to get the money from. We're going to have to go out for a loan.
You're going to do a loan?
Others?
A loan and a loan.
Kristen, any thoughts real quickly?
Nothing quick.
Remember the $88,000 in reserves? Can you ask, when you guys are doing the audit, can you ask about that, Lucy?
I can.
You know, it's, I know it's not much, but it can help out. Yeah, I'm not, I can't get the services.
Well, and that's why I don't know what we want, I was, I wanted to wait until we got, because we're close to getting our audit back, I think. And so I wanted to wait until we got those audit numbers to find out what we show before we figure out how much we're going to have to take the loan out for and how much we're going to have to do for the referendum.
So for the loan, what kind of term? Long-term, short-term?
I'd like to make it as long as possible so we've got long enough time to pay it off.
Okay, cool.
Because there ain't no way in the next two, three, five years we're going to get a big lump sum of money to be able to pay off a $500,000 loan.
Right.
Okay. Chris, any comments, observations?
No, I mean, I, I don't know, we're kind of, with them approving this budget, we're kind of stuck with this per the IGA. And I'm sure we'll talk some strategies and, you know, with Jane enclosed. But as it stands right now, we're going to have to pay it. I'm with Paula on, well, we have 60 days to figure out what we're going to do to pay it, so...
I think the only concern I have with not paying it is we have no idea what the financial state of the commission is. Do we have money to pay for things like the gas cards or other critical needs?
Maybe they would call a special meeting to address it then and consider what they should do about it. Because they have a line of credit, as was pointed out many times.
Alright, well, I don't have any Solomon-like approach to this. We haven't received the invoicing. I don't want Cambridge to be looked at as the negligent party in all this. You're right, there will be some new boards and hopefully the commission will be a bit more responsive to requests to have meetings, that this can be talked about and agreed to. I also, Paula, I know that the Village of Cambridge is not in a position to go ahead and take out a $400,000 or $500,000 annual referendum to cover our costs that we're going to have here. I don't like punting something down the road, but we are going to be talking about it further in closed session and maybe we'll have something. So at this time, we don't have to do anything.
Well, I don't think we can do anything here and, and to me, I'm going to reiterate what I said in the last time we met. When it comes to fire and EMS, we've, we've got limited choices. We've, we've got to, if we keep our own EMS and only four municipalities, we're going to be looking at a $400,000 to $500,000 a year budget, budget for fire and EMS services. And a majority of that being EMS services. Our fire services are not...
Are minimal.
Are minimal. So, so if we don't get Oakland back in and we determine we cannot pay $400,000 to $500,000 a year, we are going to have to cut services.
Okay, do we want to table this?
No, we just bring it back up at the next meeting or whenever.
Future agenda item.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, okay. And that takes care of...
One thing, one correction, though. They did invoice us. And they, they did invoice us for the second quarter.
Yeah, that's what this is in our packet. It's the invoice for the second quarter. But we have 60 days to pay it.
Right.
And we need that 60 days because the Village of Cambridge does not have the funds to pay that right now.
Okay, alright. Moving on, item 9B, welcome to Cambridge sign. What do we got here?
Let Cody take the lead on this one.
I've spoken with Jerry, the property owner, with the new proposed location at Park Road and US Highway 12. We had DOT mark the right of way at his request. And then we placed some stakes in the location that we thought would be appropriate. I had a meeting with him and he shifted the sign a little bit. But he, at the end, after he was happy with where the sign was, the DOT marked the right of way, he said he had a condition that I was not previously aware of. And that condition is he wants, he, sole discretion to remove the sign if he wants to put the property up for sale. If he sells the property, if the property was to be transferred, essentially, if he would like to do anything with the property, he wants the discretion to remove the sign. And that is his condition. If that, if he doesn't have that, he will not let us put the sign on his property. I did not want to speak, I didn't think this was a decision that I could make and I didn't want to speak on anyone else's behalf, but I did say that that probably won't be amenable.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So I thought I would bring it to the board because...
Yeah, we can't, I mean, we can't put a sign up where someone is going to say we have the discretion to take the sign down. So then we just got to keep looking for another place to put it.
Well, would we go back to the original site that was out?
We still have permission at the golf course at the original site that we had discussed on Highway 12.
I would be inclined to go with the original site.
Alright, then we will move forward with permitting then with the two locations that we had discussed about the, at the previous meetings we had about the sign then.
Awesome.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Cody. Correspondence, we have something in here from the Cambridge Foundation. And we also have something in here from Shane Johnson that's available for us as trustees to look at.
Yeah, well, we had to ask, it's avail, that Shane Johnson, we had gotten at before the last meeting and I had asked for that to be included in the packet so that it's available to the public. That the public can read that, that information. I thought it was a very good letter from him, so...
Does that get read or do we have to read it?
You can, the packet is available on the Village website.
Okay, what's that going to be read tonight?
It's on the Village, yeah, it's not going to be read. We generally don't read correspondence.
No, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I did want to make a note, though, that the Cambridge Foundation, the $8,700 for West Side Park. So that's, I know, Cody, you mentioned that was one of the projects that you guys had, you were going to be working on.
Yes.
So we can thank the Cambridge for the improvements we'll see in West Side Park, the foundation, I should say. They did approve the beautification, so when you see flowers downtown Cambridge and you see the beautiful winter garden, garland downtown Cambridge, we can thank the Cambridge Foundation for those. And then the 17-5 for well number two siding, is that a project that's, or looking into that project on your list as well?
That is on Derek.
Oh, damn it, that'll be on my next Wednesday's meeting. Oh, you're right, that's a well thing. Thank you.
No problem.
Alright.
I'm going to just throw in a little audible right here at 10C. And I just want to thank Chuck Franklin. Chuck, you've been on the board. You're, you're going to be flying away here. And we thank you for your service as a trustee and the weight that you have brought to the committees that you've been on. We appreciate so much what you've done. Wish you and your family nothing, but, you know, good luck here in the years ahead.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Chuck.
Okay, referrals, questions, the staff, future agenda items?
I have, so upcoming meetings, April 9th, Library Board, April 14th, Plan Commission, April 15th, Water and Sewer, April 15th, Economic Development, and then April 22nd, Village Board. Current board will still be in place for April 4th, Plan Commission, Commission meeting, Mark and Chuck. If you don't plan to be there, just let me know. Brian and Paula will be good for Economic Development and Water and Sewer on April 15. And then April 22nd will be our reorganization meeting. And then we will have new committee appointment lists hopefully by then. And until then, those, that you are all still on the same committees.
For staff, future, I'm going to repeat again, bike trail invoice? Okay. A listing of all the contracts that we have and an understanding of both outgoing and incoming. And then a listing of all of our loans would be helpful.
So bike trail contracts, what was the third thing?
Loans, loans.
Oh, loans, absolutely. And I do, I'm keeping an eye on my LR spreadsheet that I shared with all of you. I do believe that's all of, all of them.
Okay.
But if anything else, I will send out an update right away and point out that update.
Super, thank you.
Yep. And then you had one more thing?
Nope, those three.
That was it?
That was it.
Okay.
For future agenda items, I'd like to add on there, status of ordinances, specifically tree ordinance. I know there was some updates that were supposed to be sent out.
I can give you an update on that. So we just, Judy had been reaching out to Civic Plus because I want to say that started last May with the ordinance updates. And we just got an invoice that was included in the packet. And they said it's going to take, I want to say it's... in the packet and they said it's going to take, I want to say it's a 30 to 60 days to get those updated. And she has been reaching out for almost a year, just to give you an update. But we paid that, that is, was part of one of the bill runs and so that should hopefully be taken care of soon, not soon enough, but soon.
So if we waited 30 to 60 days to pay for it, how would that work out?
We, they would not start the work until we paid the invoice.
I know it's been out there since last year.
Were we delayed in paying that invoice?
No.
Okay, then why didn't they get it done the previous nine months?
I am not sure. I, they said they were, in the email that was sent and I was CC'd on it, it said they were waiting for approval and with Lisa being out, I replied to the email and said that I'm giving you the authorization to move forward.
Got it.
And we have paid. So I'm not sure, I've never worked with Civic Plus in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, anything else here on either questions, future agenda items? You've already gone over, Lucy, the upcoming meetings. That takes us up to item 13. Anybody wanna...
Make a motion to convene in a closed session for 1985-1, echo deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In 1985-1, golf, deferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to become involved, Village Property and Fire and EMS Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call please.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Ricklow.
Yes.
Hallenbeck.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes, okay, let's take a 10-minute...